Hello, everyone. Welcome to the second public hearing for the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook. The schedule for the meeting is a presentation by Nick McGann of the Division of Drinking Water, followed by public comments. If you would like to speak, then please see the slides currently being displayed. We ask that you send an email to the address listed on the screen and we will put you into the speaker queue. We ask that all public comments be limited to three minutes in order to ensure that everyone has a chance to speak. Please ensure that your comments are limited to the Cross Connection Handbook. And please remember that this is an opportunity, an opportunity for you to comment on the handbook. Division staff will not be responding to comments during this hearing. And with that, I give you Nick McGann for a presentation on the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook.
Thank you, Zach, and good morning, everyone. Thanks for taking your valuable time to join us today. To begin the second public hearing for the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook, we'll give a brief presentation covering the historical context of the handbook, the process to adopt the handbook, the major changes between the existing regulations and the handbook, the major changes from the first draft to the second draft of the handbook, and instructions on how to ensure your comments are received for consideration. The first slide shows some requirements of the handbook and some other quick notes. So the current cross connection and backflow regulations in Title 17 are thirty five years old. The Division of Drink and Water has attempted to update the cross connection regulations for a number of years, but in two thousand seventeen, we were finally directed by the State Assembly to update the regulations with the passing of Assembly Bill sixteen seventy one. The cross connection and backflow regulations will be updated to address what water systems deal with on a more current basis with the adoption of the policy handbook. Assembly Bill sixteen seventy one authorized the division to adopt a policy handbook instead of following the traditional regulatory process. An advantage of this is that the handbook can be more easily updated in the future as compared to the steps necessary to update a regulation. This will allow the handbook to remain more up to date by incorporating new technologies, changes in industry practices, current cross connection control practices, or issues as compared to the thirty five year old Title seventeen regulations. Additionally, in two thousand nineteen, Assembly Bill eleven eighty added a requirement for the handbook to include provisions for the use of a swivel L in lieu of an air gap. These have also been incorporated into the handbook. A B sixteen seventy one includes some specific stipulations for the adoption process, including the requirement to adopt the handbook by January first, two thousand twenty. We've obviously missed that deadline, but we are one step closer to adoption and it's safe to say it will not be thirty five years before the handbook is adopted. In addition to the adoption deadline, A B sixteen seventy one also required the state board to hold at least two public hearings and to consult with state and local agencies along with persons with expertise in the subject matter. Today is the second public hearing and the consultation has been accomplished throughout the development, including a public workshop which was held in February two thousand twenty. Slide three provides an overview of the past and anticipated dates of the handbook adoption process. The first public comment period resulted in roughly one thousand four hundred comments from over forty five individual commenters. Each comment had to be individually reviewed and considered with changes made to the handbook were appropriate or feasible. Hence, the long period of time it took us to accomplish this stage of the process. We are currently in the second round of public comment and the time period to complete this stage will be dependent upon the number and detail of comments we receive. While we do not anticipate receiving as many comments as round one, we won't know until the close of the comment period. As such, the board adoption date is not a known date, but is provided as an estimated target and is contingent on the number of comments we receive in this period. The slide provides a visual timeline of the adoption process with our current status highlighted to see where we are and what still remains. To highlight some of the major provisions of the handbook as compared to the current Title seventeen regulations, the following are highlighted. The handbook will replace the six elements of a cross connection control program as specified in Title seventeen with an expanded list of ten elements to be included in every cross connection control program. The next slide will provide a brief side by side comparison between the six and ten elements. The existing requirements lack detail and those have been updated in the handbook to provide more detail. Certified cross connection control specialists will be required to varying degrees. Specifically, public water systems must ensure a certified specialist is used to conduct or review each hazard assessment and provide a written finding of that hazard assessment. For water systems with a thousand or more service connections, they must ensure a certified specialist is consulted in the development of their cross connection control program. For water systems with three thousand or more service connections, they must employ a certified specialist either on a permanent or contract basis who is able to be contacted within one hour. Additionally, their cross connection control program coordinator must be a specialist. Note that water systems below the size criteria of both points above may still be required by the state board to comply with one or more, one or both points that are historical, ongoing, or other backflow incidents or risks. Public water systems will have to adopt cross connection control plans that provide details on their intended actions or plans to comply with each of the ten elements of a cross connection control program. The next slide provides a list of the ten elements as compared to the existing six elements. The elements of a cross connection control program that have been updated are the cross connection rules or ordinances for each, each public water system must include the legal authority for the water system to implement any necessary corrective actions. Cross connection surveys are a requirement in Title seventeen, but the handbook now requires hazard assessment. There must be a cross connection control program coordinator who will be the person responsible for the overall program. New elements introduced are details on the use of certified backflow assembly testers and cross connection control specialists, the record keeping of response to and reporting of backflow incidents, public outreach and education to help make the public more informed of cross connection and control, and coordination with local entities where applicable. The next slide highlights some of the documents that are available on the state board website. That website given at the end of the presentation. There you'll be able to find a copy of the second draft of the handbook and a copy of the first draft if you'd like to directly compare the differences between the two drafts. Also available is our response to comments received in the first comment period. Those responses are provided in an Excel spreadsheet, which is indexed by the section of the handbook for which the comment was made. Finally, a draft staff report is available. This provides an explanation or rationale for the sections of the handbook. This is similar to a statement of reasons which is provided when a regulation is proposed. To highlight some of the major changes from the first draft to the second, for fire sprinkler systems that require a backflow prevention assembly, water systems will have up to ten years to ensure compliance. Whereas the first draft exempted sprinkler systems that could quote not be reasonably remedied, the second draft requires compliance within ten years or for water systems to propose in their cross connection control plan an alternative date or method of protection to comply. For cross connection control specialists, the second draft allows for water systems to be in compliance with the handbook by using specialists from programs that use continuing education units to be used for renewal and or have the option to allow for five years of specialist experience to be used in lieu of an act of certification as a backflow assembly tester. Some other items of interest and for which we received comments from the first comment period are answer accreditation, which is required for programs that certify backflow assembly testers and cross connection control specialists. For the public outreach and local entity coordination elements of the cross connection control program, options public water systems may utilize to ensure compliance with these elements will be followed up with at a later date with guidance documents. The frequency for which hazard assessments must be conducted will need to be proposed in the plans water systems are required to create. The installation for criteria, the installation criteria for backflow prevention assemblies is more prescriptive than in Title seventeen. For instance, in the handbook, double check assembly to be installed above grid. That's all for the opening presentation of the hearing. Again, if you'd like to view any of the documents mentioned in this presentation, they can be found at the website listed on your screen right now. We'd like to submit a written comment. They must be submitted to the Division of Drinking Water Technical Operations, Tech Ops, email address on the screen by this Friday, December ninth. For today's public hearing, if you would like to provide oral comments and have not yet registered, after this presentation, there will be a screen explaining how to register. For all commenters, please provide your name and affiliation if you are representing an organization. Each commenter will have three minutes to present their comments. Commenters will be called on in the order in which requests were received, barring adjustments needed due to any commenter's technical issues. The public hearing will end when all requesters have voiced their comments. Thank you, and we will open the floor shortly.
Thanks, Nick. We've put the slides with information on how to comment back up. I'll now begin calling on people to comment. Again, as Nick said, please limit your, your comments to three minutes in order to ensure that everyone has a chance to speak. Please ensure that your comments are limited to the cross connection handbook. And please remember that this is an opportunity, opportunity for you to comment on the handbook and that division staff will not be responding to comments during this meeting. First up, we will have Tracy Manning with Mesa Water District. Following that will be Dave Boland with the California Water Association and third will be Bob Sun with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. Tracy, you may begin. Tracy, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. All right, I don't see Tracy in the meeting. If they come back, we will allow, put them later in the comment period. Next up is Dave Boland with California Water Association. Following that will be Bob Sun with L A Department of Water and Power and then John Graham with California Water Service.
Good morning, I'm Dave Boland. I'm representing the California Association of Water Agencies and the the comments are associated with the handbook and are associated with a group of agencies that are commenting together. They involve California Water Association, C W A, and that's actually the association I'm representing. And then California Association of Water Agencies, California Municipal Utilities Association, and the California Nevada Section of A W W A. And those groups have worked together. We have technical folks in each of the groups that are part of subcommittees that have been looking at the handbook and have been following the process now for over two years. And we have provided input on the previous version as well as this version. We're going to be providing a written comment letter. We're basically hitting on the high points here in terms of some of the policy concerns that we have and issues that we think can be resolved. Our number one comment and, and ask is going to be for the formation of a technical advisory committee. And that technical advisory committee, we believe, needs to be a standing committee, which will consist of specialists in cross connection control who could work with the staff on an ongoing basis to continue to revise the handbook as needed or interpret elements of the handbook as it relates to implementation. We believe that the there are a number of technical issues that are somewhat ambiguous still. There'll be a lot of diversity in the implementation and we think that this group will be an adjunct to the handbook itself. Our second big ask here, I guess, is for elements of the staff report or the staff report in its entirety to be attached as an appendix to the final handbook. We believe that there's a lot of content in the staff report that helps provide context and, and interprets some of the elements of the handbook itself and that that information is valuable and should be preserved in the form of an appendix. The third element is that we're interested in seeing model plans developed and we think that this is where a technical advisory committee could be of use. We think that the, in general, that the plans need to be explicitly laid out and, and we need to have an example or a model which shows how compliance is being achieved in the, in general terms and that that model could then be used by water suppliers to prepare their own plans. And again, finally, we, we think that the, the Green Book or the Green Manual needs to be updated. It apparently provides a lot of technical information, but again, has not been updated since nineteen eighty eight. And so we think again that the technical advisory committee could be a valuable participant in the process of updating that document and that that would provide technical basis for a lot of the implementation elements that are to occur. And we'll be providing these comments in writing and we look forward to hearing other comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bob Sun with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. Following Bob will be John Graham with Cal Water Service and then Nick Blair with the Association of California Water Agencies. Bob Sun.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, so good morning all. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comments on behalf of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. My name is Bob Sun and I'm the manager of the Source Protection and Groundwater Remediation Group in the Water Quality Division. We offered the following recommendations. First one is in response to section three point two point two C two. Obtaining the state water board's approval on a case by case basis would not be practical as our water system has approximately three hundred thousand commercial customers. So Area D W P recommends that the public water system have the authority to accept internal protection alternatives such as backflow prevention devices and air gaps based on the assessment of the certified cross connection control specialists. Comment number two is in response to section three point two point two E. So Area D W P recommends the state board remove the requirement to retrofit existing fire protection systems. This requirement would place an unrest burden on our customers. It would require that customers provide revised flow calculations and necessitate the need for redesign of systems, including installation of pumps in premises where space is simply not available. Third comment is in response to section three point three point three D. Area D W P recommends the state board remove the requirement that the public water system must receive passing field tests before providing service to a water user with a newly installed backflow prevention assembly. The testing of the backflow prevention assembly requires that the water service be turned on prior to testing. The public water system needs additional resources and we incur cost to coordinate turning on and off water services to perform field tests. And that concludes my oral comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is John Graham with California Water Service. After John will be Nick Blair of the Association of California Water Agencies and then Beth Ojaso with Water Reuse California. John Graham.
Thank you. I am John Graham, manager of Cross Connection Control for California Water Service. My comments are offered on behalf of Cal Water and are in no particular order of priority. Cal Water will submit written comments. We appreciate the care and effort required to bring the industry this close to having current guidance for our cross connection control programs. This has been a long journey and the complexity of this project is not lost on us. For the first few years after the handbook is adopted, updates will be required to provide a uniform framework for the program. Obviously, we couldn't wait to have the perfect handbook before it was adopted. There's much work to be done. With so much left to the interpretation of the Division of Drinking Water District Engineers, Cal Water is concerned that we will need to submit cross connection control plans to thirteen offices and as it's structured now, we could theoretically have thirteen slightly different programs based on the local interpretation. Our hope, as Dave Boland mentioned, is the formation of a technical advisory committee that can be used to meld the needs of the regulatory community with the practical aspects of the public water systems. There are several specific changes we're requesting the water board to consider in producing the final handbook. Clearly state that the public water system is not required to identify and abate internal cross connections, nor would we be required to accept internal protection in lieu of service protection. This should be an option to the public water system and that should be adjusted. Provide the acceptable frequency of recurring surveys. This has the potential to be the greatest source of variation across the twenty six district offices. And I know it's been highlighted in, in each step of the process that this really needs to be included in the plan, reviewed and approved. However, if, if the state has a, a minimum frequency with which they will approve, the public water systems deserve to know what that is. Often, especially for the investor owned utilities, we are going to have to ask for additional staff. And if the frequency of that is called into question by the, the regulators, we want to be able to back up our, our requests and our plans in regulation. We ask that you expand the definition of auxiliary water supply so that it includes some examples such as groundwater, springs, surface water, onsite water storage, including tanks, ponds, pools, or connection points that can be used to introduce water from a portable, portable supply. Again, just a little bit of depth there will help us defend our programs. There are several areas where the use of an equivalency is, is added or equivalent or equal or, or higher protection. For example, section three point three point one offers an equivalency for certification requirements for back, backflow prevention assemblies. Without providing a basis for making these determinations, the legal liability of the public water supplier is expanded. If you have an idea of what you would like to have for the basis of, of these different facets, then state them. The staff report does an excellent job of citing research publications related to the health hazards associated with fire sprinkler systems. We ask this perspective be adopted in the handbook by treating fire services the same as all other water connections.
Requiring Sorry, John, if you could, could you please, you're, you're over time if you could.
Okay, great. Require equal R P protection on the domestic and irrigation services. And then consider revising the residential sprinkler systems to acknowledge that the solvent welded spring loaded check valves will not, in the long term, isolate the, the two supplies. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. According to the schedule, a slight change in ordering. Next up will be Beth Ojaso with Water Reuse California. Following Beth will be Sue Mossberg with California Nevada A W W A and then Nick Blair with the Association of California Water Agencies. So Beth Ojaso, you're up.
Good morning, thank you so much for this workshop. Water reuse really just wants to focus on the swivel L portion of the handbook. We are the original sponsors of A B eleven eighty to, to have a swivel L be included. We are the original sponsors of A B eleven eighty to, to have a swivel L be included. So, we appreciate the swivel L being included. I think we're going to have a few little tweaky things, just, you know, making sure that, you know, identifying that the swivel L, you know, prevents backflow, not identifying that it, I just, again, tweaky things that we will be happy to put in a comment letter, but just wanted to, to state publicly that we appreciate this well being included. And we look forward to working with staff as this moves forward. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Next up is Sue Mossberg with California Nevada A W W A. Following Sue will be Nick Blair with the Association of California Water Agencies. Sue.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm Sue Mossberg, Executive Director of the California Nevada Section of the American Water Works Association. On behalf of Colorado A W W A, I wanted to express our appreciation for the open and timely comment review that we're hoping will take place after today's workshop and the review of the comment letters that come in later this month. Several of our members have been working closely on the cross connection control policy handbook revisions. And we do have several comments that we will be providing in a letter that comes up. We've also been working with our coalition partners on some general policy level comments. And specifically wanted to speak to three of those items today. The establishment of a technical advisory committee of cross connection control specialists, we believe, is an important element to continuing to improve and dial into the specificity of the com, of the cross connection control programs as they mature under this new cross connection control policy handbook. So, we do want to encourage that a technical advisory committee be developed to continue the regulatory work that lies ahead. We also wanted to request that the inclusion of the staff report in the appendix to the handbook, because it provides valuable insight into the intentions of the State Water Resources Control Board during the development of this policy handbook. And third, to provide templates for cross connection control plans that conform to the requirements of the handbook. Many water systems are going to be struggling with how to comply with the regulations. And so whatever can be done to provide templates and guidance materials that agencies can simply update to their needs would be very, very helpful. As I mentioned, thank you for the opportunity to recognize and appreciate the process that's happened to date. And I look forward to the continuation of the process through a technical advisory committee in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sue. Next is Nick Blair with the Association of California Water Agencies. Nick?
Good morning all. I'm Nick Blair, regulatory advocate with the Association of California Water Agencies. We represent more than four hundred and sixty public water agencies throughout the state that deliver approximately ninety percent of the water in California for domestic agricultural and industrial uses. Want to reiterate, thank you for the opportunity to speak today on the latest draft handbook. And we look forward to the ongoing dialogue with both the state water board and our coalition partners who've already spoken today. I'll be brief, since a lot of what's been said is what I'm agreeing with. So, Aqua, along with the California Municipal Utilities Association, want to align our comments with that which C W A, C N Nevada, A W W A, and C W S have already noted. We're working in unison with them to provide voice and input for public water systems across the state. We want to emphasize the need to continue to have opportunities for this input and conversation as technologies and systems advance and additional guidances required. There are numerous additions and clarifications that my colleagues have already noted the need to be rectified. And we also think that the best way to proceed is to form a standing technical advisory committee consisting of qualified cross control specialists representing diverse polygwar system statewide to advise the state board on implementation concerns for requirements. And we'll just also note that we think this pack could draw maybe some influence from some already established programs, including the microplastics and or lead and copper regulatory programs. We also want to reiterate that the inclusion of the November second draft staff report would be a great addition to any final reports to provide clarification and interpretation for the cross control text. And with that being said, thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning, and we look forward to the ongoing dialogue.
Thank you, Nick. So, we've reached the end of the current public commenter list. We will take a brief ten minute break to give the opportunity for any final people to register and provide public comments. In ten minutes, I will close out or resume public comments. So, at ten ten. Thank you for all your comments so far. All right, thank you for coming back. We do have a couple more speakers on the list. As an aside, if you are interested and if you have provided comments already and are interested in providing additional comments or another round of speaking, please send an email to the email address on the screen, which I believe is ddw-techops@waterboards.ca.gov, and we will add you into the list for more speaking. With that, the next speaker will be John Graham with California Water Service. Following John will be Tim Worley with Cal Mutuals. John, go ahead.
Thank you. And I just had one more thing that I wanted to bring up, and that is regarding the modification of backflow prevention assemblies. And I know that it's considered heresy in the industry to consider modifying backflow preventers. However, with the use of construction water meters and backflow protection, there are no approved backflow preventers that have a slow operating gate valve. They're all ball valves with the exception of some large and unwieldy O S and Y valves. And having a ball valve on those portable construction meters creates the opportunity for water hammer, which can, of course, damage the water distribution system, but more importantly, can cause injury. And so, I, I believe that the public water supplier should be able to adopt minor modifications by exchanging the ball valves for gate valves, provided that the assemblies can still be tested using the approved test procedures. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Next is Tim Worley with Cal Mutuals. Tim?
Thank you very, thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. So, I am representing the Associate, California Association of Mutual Water Companies, or Cal Mutuals, as you have referred to us. And I believe our association will be submitting some written comments, but I do appreciate this opportunity. And I'm sorry that I had such a hard time registering to get on the, on the list. So, Cal Mutuals understands and appreciates the need for cross connection prevention. But there are concerns that the requirements and associated, the costs of those requirements may not be commensurate with the risk in some cases. For instance, many mutual water companies only provide water for residences. So, the typical cross connection prevention might be simpler than in, in cases where there are sources of potential contamination, such as those listed on the high hazard premises list in appendix D. So, our, our comments are that there should be some variance, perhaps, or some alternative compliance mechanism for those low, lower risk and simpler systems to comply with the, with the cross connection control requirements. We could support the suggestion that other commentators have made for a technical advisory committee. And if such is, is stood up, it should include technical expertise representing smaller systems so that this perspective can be represented. We believe that record keeping should be simplified by the, by providing a template report form on potential hazards and prevention measures in place. This form, again, could be developed by industry experts in a technical advisory committee or in some other process. So, a variance section, we understand it's a, it's a fairly significant ask at this date. But the, the process would not need to hold up, be held up for that to be accomplished if a technical advisory committee can be assigned to, to develop that kind of procedure. So, in overall perspective, our comment is to make the requirements mincerate with the degree of risk. We understand that there is still some risk with small systems, but those that are primarily or completely residential in measure.